We're waiting to see if Rhonda's ready.
Sure, blame it on Rhonda.
Sorry, I was distracting her.
And are we waiting for our county council?
She's ready.
We can circle back on that, but I...
Okay.
I don't see how, I don't see any notice provisions in here to where it goes, but so it's going to be common sense.
Yeah, well, we have...
We better adjourn first.
We have an account set up.
So until next month, yeah.
Okay, I'm going to call the board meeting for the Madera County Arts Authority Board of Directors together. And welcome, everyone. Are there any additions to the agenda?
No, Madam Chair, no additions to the agenda.
Okay, then let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and Ray, would you read the pledge today?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undeniably indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the public comment section of the meeting where time is set aside for members of the public to address the board. I see none, so we'll move on to our public session. We have approval of the minutes, consideration of the minutes of the August 26th, 2019 meeting. Again, I see no public comment, so if there's no comment from the board, we'll...
I make a motion for approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Item 4B is discussion and consideration of contributions to Madera County Arts Authority 2019-2020 budget. We now have money allocated from the county. We have money allocated from Madera Unified School District. You have any update from the city as of right now about how you're doing on the timeline?
I do have a timeline now. We have approved an audit firm to come in. The group is coming in and hopefully be done by December of 19, so we should know first of the year.
Okay. So how comfortable are you with the city, with the county and the school district in being able to move forward?
I'm okay with that, yes.
Yeah. Are you guys, are your agencies okay with moving forward, waiting for them until December?
I have no agency, but I go back to the question I asked last time. Where's the Arts Council?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was going to report last on the Arts Council. The Arts Council has $25,000 committed and approved by the board. They were asking about, what? They were asking about how they're going to be invoiced or how we get that process rolling. So I thought we could spend a moment today clarifying. We have a checking account, okay? And now it's time to figure out how to put money in it. Is that what you were going to...
No, she was going to say something else. She was going to say, be careful about committing the county to something before she has a chance to see what the original agreement was. Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Say, I read your mind.
Thank you, Director Poitras. And so, as this board may be aware, in 2019, on April 16th, the Madera County Board of Supervisors approved the startup funds. And in that resolution, it says it's subject to the equal matching amount as by the founding members. If the director would like, then I can take this, I can work with your chief of staff and take this back to the Board of Supervisors on October 8th to amend this resolution, which would allow for distribution of the startup funds, knowing that the city of Madera is in audit mode. And then that would be subject to approval of the Board of Supervisors and the check could be issued immediately thereafter, as soon as the auditor controller can do that.
Okay, that'd be fine with me.
Okay.
Okay.
So in answer to your question, Julie, I for one would be okay with the idea of the three startup funders allowing us to go forward with the understanding that the city will come to pay in January so we can start the ball rolling.
That's our hope.
Yeah. Sometimes, hope does more than spring eternal.
Okay. So Mr. Poitras is our treasurer. And it's time to find a bookkeeper and develop our process for how we're going to receive money and spend money. And so you want to know if anybody has any bookkeepers who might be available? We have money set aside in our budget to hire a bookkeeper. If anybody knows somebody who might want to take on our little project, it's not going to take much, but it would be good to have somebody do that. So perhaps if you know somebody, if you know somebody, might let Bob know.
Yeah.
And then you'll work on whether we need to invoice. I guess, Mr. Seibert, the question was, for the school district, they're apparently able to make a transfer here at the county because it was approved by the board. I don't know what the procedure we would go through in the school district. Shall I talk to the finance person?
Have you talked to somebody already?
Hmm?
You talked to somebody already?
No, not in the school district.
Well, imagine you check an account set up, go to this transfer of funds into...
Okay. I wonder though if the school...
Excuse me, would you be sure to speak into your mic, otherwise nothing's recorded. Thank you.
I'm... I think, I don't know if the school district wants an invoice in order to transfer the funds over or if they do that because they have approved it.
Well, you have to just ask Orellas.
Yeah. Okay. I can follow up with her and find out how she does that.
Okay.
Okay.
And Chair?
Yes.
If I may, since it is a duty of the treasurer to receive and provide receipts of all authority money, then maybe we use your business address of the treasurer to collect those and maybe give those to the bookkeeper if one is established. But in terms of, there will also most likely be a wire transfer, and so receiving an actual check may not be necessary at all. But should one of the agencies need to deliver a check, can we use your treasurer, your office here at this government center as the...
That'd be fantastic.
Okay.
Thank you.
But more than likely, it'll just be a direct wire.
Yeah, the Arts Councils may be as well.
I'm not sure.
It will be taking it from our investment account, so, the return on our investment. So I don't know if it comes from them automatically wired or if they...
Yeah, but, well, you could probably...
I can, I'll check.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Is it from the outfit in Fresno? Okay, yeah, they probably, I mean, they could probably do both. I'm sure they have a checking account, they can put the funds in, so, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So let's try to get that done because we want to hire our bookkeeper and see who we've got there. Do we need to, does anyone... Now, if we want to hire a bookkeeper, is that a process of advertising? Or is that a...
Whether that's a specialized service or not, I don't think that we have anybody within the Madera County Arts Council. There is no staff right now that can be the bookkeeper. And so you'd most likely need to contract out for that as well. And, or fold it into the potential ad hoc committee discussion later on as something that, besides a consultant, I made it a little loose so the consultant could also, we could take into consideration any other services needed. So if the consultant can think about the financing and can do bookkeeping, that's one thing. A lot of times, you try to separate those functions, but that's why there's a treasurer. But also, I think, contracting with a bookkeeper because we don't have anybody internally that can do it makes absolute sense. Okay.
Yeah, this is not going to take much time. Why doesn't either the school district, the county, or the city just do it? Maybe Orellas could do it, or the city could do it, or, you know, somebody. A lot simpler than going out and trying to contract somebody.
Well, I guess, you know, it would take somebody, I think, that has, you know, basic bookkeeping skills, you know, understands, you know...
Yeah, I mean, we have our county, we have the Robles, and the school district.
Well, do you think she'd be willing to do that, or?
I'm not sure. We've got staff that'll do that.
The only problem, I believe, in the county, it becomes the auditor's responsibility. And the auditor is like a separate elected position, you know, within the county organization. So it kind of gets a little, you know, if I'm not mistaken, council, is that, yeah. So if, yeah, if the school district should be willing to do it, that'd be beautiful.
So, but another option would be the Arts Council, the bookkeeper, the bookkeeping system. We hire a bookkeeper for the Arts Council, so that could be a separate account. As well.
That'd be pretty simple. You hire somebody?
Mm-hmm, yes. We have a contract, we contract, we don't hire, we contract with a company out of Fresno that does nonprofits. The other thing we did, when we, when the agencies put the money in for the architectural funds, to do the architectural plans, each agency put in the money. And we found our agency, the Arts Council, contacted the bookkeeper, and we kept track of the funds for that. So we're not talking about a long-term commitment, perhaps. We're only talking about startup. So there might be a volunteer. We used a volunteer who was a CPA, who was supportive of the arts. And she did our little bookkeeping for us. So that's another option. Sometimes when you get into the agencies and business offices and stuff, it can be more trouble than it's worth. So...
Yeah.
To start up.
Well, I know a bookkeeper, they're going to generally have QuickBooks access to that and which kicks out, you know, your income statements, your balance sheets, and things of that sort. And sometimes your government agencies work on different government accounting and things of that sort. It's much more, it's very complicated and sometimes just getting some kind of a simple system is, it shouldn't be difficult, but it is for whatever reason.
So can we leave it to you two?
If you had a separate system, then like, well, QuickBooks, you're probably better off to go with the...
Yeah, that's how...
Our councils.
Okay. Can we leave it to you to explore what's possible there, and I'll check with her and find out?
Yeah, if you can reach out with her, then I can contact...
And Chair, might I make a recommendation? At the next Arts Authority meeting, we might add this for a full discussion because the bylaws do talk about this. The duties of the treasurer, there's an auditor that needs to audit annually. And then underneath it, it's authority of the controller. There shall also be a controller of the authority. Initially, the controller of the authority shall be the treasurer. The authority may at time to time appoint someone other than the treasurer as a controller. So essentially, the controller shall draw warrants to pay demands against the authority, so it sounds like a bookkeeper. And so if it pleases this board, at the next agenda, I can lay this out in a board letter for a more informed discussion about what we can do with bookkeeping.
Okay.
I've got a question then on the county's resolution. It needed, what, three agencies? That you were reading earlier?
Yes.
So that would be the school district, the city, and the county?
Yeah, the founding members are those three agencies because only they have the power to form a JPA. The Arts Council is in a local government, and so...
So that'd have to be, either be amended, or we'd have to wait for the city to okay their part?
No, what I heard from Director Poitras is that they are satisfied, he is satisfied with the city of Madera's movement on this and that he will go to the Board of Supervisors most likely on October 8th to amend this resolution to not make it contingent on the third founding agency.
Yeah, it didn't sound like earlier that it's going to amend that resolution.
Yes, that's the direction I got, so...
Okay. Okay, anything else about the contributions? I think we're, we know where we are right now. And as soon as we know where to send the check, we can start to order it up. Okay, item 4C, discussion and consideration of a contract with planning and with a planning and financing consultant for the Performing Arts Center. As a result of our discussion at the last meeting, Mrs. Garza has put together the, I hope you have copies in front of you, a proposed contract for, agreement for consultant services. Mrs. Garza, would you like to share with us what you've developed here?
Sure. Thank you, Chair and members of the board. At our last meeting, the question was, are we able to sole source, if you will, the consultant services? And if your board may have received a legal opinion from me, hopefully that laid it all out. I put a bit of it here in your board letter, but the answer is yes. And with that, we put together a model consultant agreement. Of course, the details, the devil is in the details, as you might know. So what this consultant will actually do, we know very broad stroked what they will be looking into and what's going to be requested. But once either the ad hoc committee or some other source presents to you a consultant that can do these things, then we will amend this and bring it back to your board for approval with the details of the rate and the scope of services and who it is specifically. So right now, I just wanted to answer the legal question about how you would go about retaining a consultant and what sort of agreement that might, what it would actually look like, whether they would want to have insurance, the term. All of those details would be easy to plug in and amend it so that you can contract with the consultant of your choice. At this point, I wouldn't recommend approving this because it clearly doesn't have the details of what will actually be expected from a consultant. But I just wanted to answer the legal question and also give you a framework of what an agreement might look like.
Okay. Do you have questions?
Chairman, we, I had a chance to take a look at this, and it looks like it fulfills everything that we need. What I did like, what I really liked was, under the scope, it talked about, under Agreement Point 1, page 1, it says, consultants shall identify at the earliest feasible time any factors that would severely inhibit or prohibit the ultimate completion or implementation of the project. Consultants shall promptly notify MCA representative of consultant's findings. So it's, you know, so it shows a very proactive approach on the part of a consultant to ensure that, you know, there's, it's feasible. So we're not going down the road in the 11th hour and go, oh, sorry, can't do it, or something, so...
Okay. No surprise. Other comments, thoughts?
Looked good to me, preliminarily.
I noticed under Scope that there's going to be an Exhibit A, which will be the scope of the work. And that makes me think that either we or the ad hoc committee, however that's going to be structured, is going to have to come up with the scope of the work before we actually enter into an agreement with someone.
Chair, if I might add to that, you've done a lot of that work in terms of what is expected. Generally, we're requesting a proposal of what exactly will you do and how much will it cost? And generally, when they send in that proposal, that's what we attach as Exhibit A if it so satisfies the committee. I think that this board has done some work to flesh out what it needs. And with the QK write-up and the work that's been done previously, I feel like we, the ad hoc committee might be asking for a scope of service, a proposal from a consultant. Lay it all out, give us a timeline, tell us the price. And if that has to be tweaked a few times, so be it. But then that would be what is attached as Exhibit A typically.
So you're saying that what we received already in a memo from QK in our discussions with them would be adequate to give to a consultant, and then they can develop their plan from there?
It'd be a discussion, right, as long as that, there was no reason we couldn't share that. I wasn't under that understanding, but yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, if everybody's okay with the agreement and knowing that we can actually contract, and you have no other comments on item 4C, then we can move to 4D, which is discussion and consideration to appoint an ad hoc advisory committee to advise the MCAA on performing arts center consultant and related services. And again, as Garza has notified us in our packet about the rules of having a board committee versus having an ad hoc committee. So maybe you could just give us a little quick overview of that again?
Sure thing. My quick overview is, the Brown Act is stingy when it comes to what is a meeting. And so there have been times when, for example, a city manager or administrator is directed to go form a committee, and it's directed from the dais. That has been found in opinions to actually be the type of committee that's subject to a Brown Act. And so I would just say mostly everything that this board appoints would be subject to the Brown Act, limited to this very narrow exception, an ad hoc advisory committee. Because it says 1, 2, 3, and 4. It doesn't say or. It says all of these factors have to be a part of a true ad hoc committee. And in that case, it's not subject to the Brown Act. So for your purposes, two members, if you wanted to appoint today two members to create this ad hoc committee, that would not be subject to the Brown Act. And if you also wanted to recommend that from time to time, they include the county administrative officer and the two city managers to work with the ad hoc committee to provide recommendations, to have some discussions. And that would be appropriate as well, as long as they are not a part of the actual committee. Then that's really what my discussion was trying to explain.
Questions? Thoughts?
What you're saying, if it's advisory, ad hoc committee, they're going to advise the board, then they don't have to meet under the Brown Act?
Correct.
They would come, they would come to the meeting when they...
And give you recommendations. It's strictly, there's no decision-making authority. They would simply be bringing back recommendations. Correct. Then they're not subject to the Brown Act.
I would agree with that.
You know the law.
So in that regard, can the ad hoc committee review the consultant's proposals and then prepare a recommendation to come to the board?
Yes, and they can seek the help of their administrators as needed. If, I know you don't have an administrator, but you can call on them.
That's not correct. I'm married. Like, this morning, she was telling me what she expected of me.
With that, I'd like to nominate our Chair Okin as part of that advisory committee.
I would like to let other people on the board...
Okay.
Have that opportunity because, because I think the other board members might like that opportunity. And I'm going to be gone in October. So if you want to get started on this, it might be good to have someone else. So, thank you.
How about I volunteer? I'll volunteer to be on the ad hoc committee.
Okay. Mr. Seibert?
We were talking about the city and the county managers, right, being on there?
Mm-hmm.
Those two.
And superintendent, or somebody from each of the, from each of the agencies.
And I mean two from here.
Yeah, we can have two of us, and then we can have as many others as we want to. So the suggestion was that we try to find somebody knowledgeable from city, county, and school district to might sit in. Because you all have facility people, and you all have, you have a city manager who knows all about development.
I see this as expanding as time goes by. A smaller group, first order of business being, who do you think should be on this advisory committee and for what purpose? And then reach out to some of these people, see if they want to or not, and do that for a while, and then come up with a manageable group of people to answer these questions and report back to the board. So the first group could be the two members of this board, and then the three administrators, asking each other, who do you think should be on this committee? And then expand the committee. I don't, you know, Plan B, I suppose, would be just two people from this board and the three administrators picking somebody to be a consultant, at least as far as a recommendation is concerned. But I think for public relations purposes and for getting donations, significant donations from interested people in the community, it'd be better if they were included upfront on that advisory committee, if that makes sense. I understand that there's maybe not an interest from administrators to be involved in that decision. I wouldn't think so, but, you know, when we had Mr. Fleming here last month, certainly appears to be an interest in providing some information. While not necessarily serving on a committee. Right. I get that. And I think he could still do that. It was just, I think, in a meeting that they all had, it was, you know, less than enthusiastic response from the others, so I...
In terms of being on an ad hoc committee?
And, well, at least...
Or being involved in it?
Being involved with the selection of the consultant. It was kind of punted back to us to do that, so...
Okay.
So we could talk, we could work with Mr. Querying and maybe get some, you know, recommendations and so forth. And I'm sure that the administrators would be willing to provide some suggestions, but I think that would be it. Here are some suggestions, and then they would be backing off at that point. So I think the ad hoc committee right now is just going to be two of us, whoever those two are, Chuck and Ray.
Well, I can understand staff, because our staff's overwhelmed.
Yeah.
And I'm asking Drew Stuffner to look at me like, wow, you know, we're already overwhelmed.
Right.
And add another thing on her plate. I mean, it's, it's the city, I mean, Eric and Ardon, Ardondo, they have experience in this. They give us recommendations, mainly people that do interview.
We do have a list of four names that were presented by, let's see, maybe you don't know this. We had a workshop, I don't know if you were there. We had a workshop with QK. They're consultants. They do planning, urban planning and all of that kind of thing. And they were very helpful to us in terms of developing a scope of the work that needed to be done. And then, and he gave us four names of people who would be available part-time, who have substantial experience in the kind of work that we need done in the first phase. This is not somebody who'd be consulting forever, but somebody who would be in our first phase of all of this. So we have some names to start with. But you had mentioned at the last meeting that since, Mr. Rodriguez from... But you had mentioned at the last meeting that since Mr. Rodriguez from the city has, has, you know, urban development experience, he might be a good set of eyes and ears to help look at those people and help choose that consultant. So I'm not picturing this committee is going to go on more than getting a consultant hired. So this is like a month or two there.
Yeah, I mean, it could have somebody that had experience like that. You know, they've been around the block one or two times.
Well, Eric asked them, but I'm sure if the representatives put some heat on them, like if you put some heat on Arnaldo and you put some heat on Todd, I mean, what's he going to say? I'm not going to, no, you guys are on your own. I mean, they're going to say, okay, here's some suggestions. But Eric couldn't get, you know, couldn't get that in. I mean, he's a peer, he's not their boss, you know, so...
Well, I, I'm sure when he looked at my phone, it's like me looking at my phone, and I got, you know, every day...
Right.
Something going on. You kind of want to hold back.
So Chair O'Keane, would it be possible for each board member here to nominate somebody to be on this committee? They feel it would have those credentials to do that?
Sure.
To do what?
To sit on the committee with the two ad hoc that are here.
It's possible?
Mm-hmm. Oh, so I would like to throw a name out. I would like to suggest Jim Talbert. He was our, our, our D.A.
Right. He knows a lot about other things.
Ray, have you agreed to serve on this, ad hoc advisory?
No, I won't turn you, I guess, but I, you know...
I, I move that nominations be closed.
I mean, Arnold should, I would think Arnold should be on there because of the experience that he has.
And I'll, and I'll work on that, but we have to have two from here. And so, board members, uh...
No, we don't actually have to have two. There's, there's no more than two since they're...
Okay.
That would, more than that would be inappropriate quorum.
So we have representative, or board member Wieland and board member Seibert?
I guess.
Okay. And nominations? Okay, that's our nominations. Do we need to, to vote for them?
Yes, this would be the formation and appointment of an ad hoc advisory committee to directors, so that it would be a formal motion and a second, an approval that would be needed.
So is there a motion?
I'd make a motion that members Wieland and Seibert are appointed to the, are the board members of the ad hoc committee.
Second.
Any other comments?
None from the audience?
Public.
Public? Okay. So we've had a motion for Mr. Wieland and Mr. Seibert to be our two representatives to the ad hoc committee to select the, or to screen the applications for a consultant. Oliver?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I'm thinking about it.
Okay. And then, now, I think, Mrs. Gallegos, you're, you're recommending that Mr. Talbert, who knows all about downtown and all of this project, be one of the people that is brought in to be one of the, on the committee as well. Yes. And we don't have to, do we?
To be considered, considered by the committee? Somebody to be considered by the committee as a consultant?
Okay, so the, the, the two people that we have appointed to the ad hoc committee are now going to consider who they're going to add to it?
They're going to consider who they need help from to generate a list of consultants, to vet the consultants, and bring back a recommendation to this board, either by a contract or a two-step process where they come back and say, we've got it down to two. Do you want to talk to two consultants? However the process may be, but the ad hoc committee would meet and begin to generate a list of recommended consultants for this board.
Okay. Okay. If anybody else wants to add a name to be considered, then you can give that to Mr. Wieland or Mr. Seibert? Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. That's it.
Member reports?
Yes. Under member and staff reports, do we have any? I have a question for the county. Is there any update on the park and the grant for the park? Did we get it or not?
It's been submit, it was submitted in August, and we will know in, I believe it's mid to late December if we receive it or not.
Okay. And then, do you know when they're going to start building downtown?
I have not gotten a date.
Okay, that's a great, big, great project.
I've got a date for you.
Who's going to build downtown?
We're building two facilities, the veteran and the building camp. And five houses with Habitat coming pretty soon.
I'm still looking at our district office down here.
And I hope we can help you with that. Okay. Any other member reports, staff reports? Okay, then, this meeting, oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. The October meeting is scheduled for October 28th. And I will not be here on the 28th of October. But my question is, do we have items ready for that agenda? If we don't have, if the ad hoc committee thinks you'll be ready, then that would be a fine. And we do have to have some discussion of the bookkeeping process. So do you feel that we need to have the meeting in October? Or should we wait until November?
How about November, just to make sure?
November 25th is what I have on my calendar for.
Yes, that would be November 25th. So we can, now, Mrs. Cargill, you go through a process of canceling a meeting? Okay. So if it's our decision here to, it sounds like we're going to cancel the October meeting. Our next meeting would be November 25th. And hopefully by then, we'll have a report from the ad hoc committee and know a little bit more about how we're going to get our money. Okay, any other items? Okay. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Very good. Yeah, all right, okay.